I can't hear you. Mine is, I don't know about yours.
Mine's on.
Say it again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Welcome to the March 17 Biloxi City Council Meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I do, I'm moved.
Ms. Newman, I think they're spreading us out. Ms. Newman, I feel like they're spreading us out. Is she? I don't know what their goal is. Where? She's over, oh, I apologize, you're over here today. You have to stay so far away from me and... Right over here.
That's good, she's all right.
Once again, do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
I move.
Moved by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Councilman Guines. All in favor?
We have to suspend the rules.
Do we have an addition?
Yeah.
We withdraw your motion to accept the agenda?
I will.
Okay. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
I move.
Motion by Lawrence, seconded by Guines. Will you read the additions, please?
To our policy agenda, we're adding item 5G resolution for the state of emergency for COVID-19. We're adding item 4H resolution concerning geo bonds and the amount of, well, I'm sorry, I don't have the amount. To our consent agenda, we're removing item 5C, an amount of $10,000. We're removing item 5G, funding for parks and recreation. We're removing item 5N for the purchase of a small engine and the amount of $10,000. We're moving 5FF, resolution rescinding resolution 2210. We're moving item 5GG, resolution MOU for MDMR. We're removing 5HH, resolution for Covington and Environmental Capital Projects, small craft to Oak Boardwalk. We're moving I, excuse me, 5II, resolution for an event at MGM Park. We're also removing 5PP, resolution reappointing Swayze Collier. And we are adjusting our routine agenda with those same amounts.
We're adding.
We're adding.
Oh, 5G?
5PP is in addition.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I just read that.
I'm sorry?
Are you on 5PP?
Yeah, we think you said that we, did she say that we were, I think you said removing...
Oh, we're adding, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
I move the agenda as amended.
The amendment has been moved by George Lawrence, seconded by Felix Guines. All, any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
It's a move.
Moved by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Felix Guines. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We'll begin with the presentation agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everybody. Have a, happy St. Patrick's Day on this March 17. And, you know, we're here together to address some of these things that are unknown to us. I mean, from a, this virus challenge that we have, it's very serious and people are worried and we're worried. And what we want to say to the folks on BTV that will be watching, that, you know, we're, this is a fluid situation and no one, everyone here is interested in one thing, our citizens, our way of life, the future of Biloxi. And, you know, I think Biloxi is positioned to address the things that we're going to obviously be facing with 10,000 jobs and some of these other things that are happening to us directly and indirectly. We have established, I think, our governor has indicated that he would be helpful and they're, they're at stake just like us. But this is a multimillion dollar challenge that, rest assured, together we'll make those course adjustments and it'll work out for us, for our citizens. And so I'm excited today to, to address these challenges. It's almost like a boxing match. You're in it now and we're going to fight till we win it. So with that said, I'd ask, as part of this challenge, Frank Bordeaux is here to kind of discuss some options that we have as, as these financial challenges that we're going to be facing here very shortly. Frank?
Does everybody have their one sheet? I didn't know where everybody was sitting. Here, let's see.
It's on now. It's by now.
No, 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 that's good. No, here's one right here. Me and Vic can share. We can share. No, you take it, I got one.
Testing. I always wanted to do that.
Mike check, that's a good mic I got here.
So as we discussed back in the budget hearings, we, we knew that this year was going to be a very difficult year as far as your property market, the property market has hardened. And it's been kind of, like the mayor said, it's been very fluid of which option we would take. And so that, in front of y'all, if you look towards the middle of the page, the only area to really try to save money is in the wind deductible buyback. And so last year we had, and that's our wind deductible, we buy from $3.5 million, last year we bought to $250,000. And you can see there's a tremendous jump there. A week ago, in meeting with the administration and meeting with some members of the insurance committee, that went to, up to $750,000 in light of yesterday with the budget being cut. We, we're now raising that to a $1 million wind deductible buyback, which would save us an additional $40,000 to 19,000, for a total of $1,889,301. I'm working with the administration on, we, we have not had to do, break our premium up over time in previous years. Our agency is willing to do a third, a third, a third payment with no interest. That's as far as we can go as an agency. And then we're also going to look at 11 pays, so we can spread that out over time while the budget is, is being modified. So I can answer any questions you, that you might have besides the deductible, all other terms and conditions remain the same as last year.
Are there any questions on the panel?
We're doing the best we can by adjusting these things, at least for this year, to save ourselves. You know, it was like 220, so we're down to 180, so you're talking about $4,000 something thousand. And right now we need to control everything we can as far as money wise. So it's a good option and I appreciate if you break it down to three payments, $600,000 or so, that's, that's good for the city because right now we're going to be losing a lot of money with the casinos and everybody being shut down. So it's tough. That's two and a half million a month.
Yes, sir.
If it goes for a whole month. So appreciate you working with us and I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
We'll move on to departmental reports. Do we have any? If there may be none, we'll move over to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
A couple of things. Been in the medical field, Plaquenil 200 is the drug they're talking about on TV. It's a malaria drug. They use it for rheumatoid arthritis and also for dermatology, people use it. So it's quickly available and it seems to work with the virus. And it's, your chemical name is hydroxidine chloroquine. The chemical name compared to the brand name, which everybody familiar with, it's Plaquenil, 200 milligram. And every time you go overseas to anything with malaria, that's the drug you take when you go over there. It seems to work. So that was one thing on the TV, so if somebody thought getting sick, that's one way to do it pretty quick. And the other one is the Ebola vaccine actually works same way with the virus. So they have stuff out there available right now if somebody's feeling sick or somebody in their family gets sick. That's a medical question 101, so that's all on that one. The second thing is, I got my census report yesterday and I brought it here to Carrie and in about a minute and a half, she had it in the machine and done. So what I'm suggesting, the FOFO and them, all the employees in the city, and they have benefit, people, which are probably about 2,000 people, it don't take anything to put this thing, once you get your form and the number, you just put it in the computer and it's instant. So everybody wants to say, everybody gets approved, that's the easy way to do it. So that's kind of just passing it on. I got my census stuff yesterday, I don't know if anybody else got any. And that's what it is, they give you a number, when you put that number in, it brings up your name and you just fill it in, it's done instantly. So that's a good thing, city needs to pay attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Guines?
Yeah, just wish everyone to be safe with this coronavirus. My ward meeting for next weekend, well, two weeks from now, I'm going to reschedule it. I like to have my people out, so I'm going to reschedule. That, that concludes my report and glad that no judge got all his census.
Thank you, Councilman Guines. Councilwoman Newman?
My ward meeting's in April. We don't know how long this is going to last, so we'll hold off and see, but God be with us all. Hopefully this does not last very long and just try not to panic and just keep yourself clean and stay away from nasty people. God bless you.
Councilman Tisdale?
Which is, which is why we're seven or eight feet apart right now, I think. Really just a couple of things. There's an item on the agenda today, item 5E, which deals with the conditional use. And I'd appreciate your support on that item. The only other thing that, that I'd like to say is there were two students at Biloxi High School who had really outstanding ACT scores. One is a senior, Michaela Herndon, and she scored a 33 on her ACT test. And the other is a sophomore, Madeline Petrie, who made a perfect score of 36. And I just, the significance of, of scoring in the 30s is that it opens doors to huge scholarship possibilities. So congratulations to them and it's great to see good things happening in our school district. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Glavine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We had a ward meeting yesterday evening. Things changed rapidly as we planned on limiting it to 50 persons. We were going to do a thermometer scan with a thermal thermometer. Anybody having a fever, we weren't going to let into the meeting. And we had Ecolab come and sanitize the room prior to the event. However, with the CDC changing, recommending meetings of 50 or less to 10 or less, we restrict that there was no audience. We taped the session. It is, I think a few minutes ago was put on BTV and YouTube. And I do appreciate the directors and the business owners coming out and doing those presentations. It's still important to get the information out to our citizens that are interested. As a side note, my wife was at the door and she served coffee and put her out that she during the day and she had conversations with the folks and explained reasons why we had to modify the meeting. These are certainly turbulent times and unprecedented times that we're in. Tourism business, which is a big part of who we are in Biloxi and, and other businesses are, are taking a big hit. The uncertainty for our families and children is something that we have to deal with and overcome. We are recommending, or last night we did discuss, or my wife discussed with several people, make sure that you give your kids some, some time and you can go on several sources. There's a program called iReady and there's other educational sources, but to continue to keep them in the routine of some semblance of continuing their studies at home, that may be quite difficult. I assure you, they're feeling some anxiety and uncertainty that everyone else is. I'd like to, again, shout out to our mayor for his leadership and this thing is not just changing by the hour, it's changing by the minute. FOFO, thank you for standing on top of it. I'm sure we got some turbulent days ahead, but I'm glad that you're at helm. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Councilman Barrett?
Just echoing what everyone else has said, I'm sure that we have some tough times ahead of us, especially if this lasts any amount of time and some tough decisions to make as a city, but I believe in this body and our administration, I believe that we'll make the right decisions. I just wish everyone the best and if anyone gets hungry, I have plenty of ramen noodles at my house. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Barrett. And my report will be short and sweet. First off, Mr. Coggins, thank you for showing up this morning and I apologize that I wasn't, but as most of small business owners on around the coast are, are running around like chickens with their head cut off trying to adjust how they're going to maintain personnel and staff with these low numbers in, in sales and revenue generation, I was doing that this morning. So I apologize, I wasn't able to be here. However, with what's going on in our community and our economy right now, I, I think that I would hope that the board would look to suspend any unreasonable expenditures at this time until we get some certainty fiscally at least. Other than that, my family's safe and healthy and I wish the same for all of you guys. That ends my report. We'll move on to public agenda. It gives us citizens' comments. We have 45 minutes total, three minutes per person. Is there anybody on my left-hand side or your right-hand side of the room that would care to speak? When you approach the table, please state your name and address for the record into the microphone.
Bobby Heinrich, 1806 23rd Avenue in Guffport. I'm here to represent the owner for item number, or item E, and want to make myself available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Heinrich. We'll take that when, when we address item E. Thank you for being here. Do I have anybody else on the left-hand side of the room, your right-hand side of the room, that would like to come up and speak?
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the council. My name is Leo Carney, Biloxi, Mississippi, on Keller Avenue. I just wanted to, you know, give a shout out to all you guys, you know, for all your hard work that you're doing, the esteemed mayor, and you guys who ran for, for office, you know, I was supporting all you guys. All right. I want to address the coronavirus issues for our small businesses. I'm the kitchen manager at McElroy's Harvest House in Biloxi and a lot, a lot of our staff are concerned, as well as, you know, our ownership, are concerned as far as what, again, what assurances will there be as far as, you know, payroll, losses on payroll, would there, would there be a payroll tax exemption for some of these small businesses? What would be some, some, some of the ways that they could, they could recoup some of the losses from, you know, revenue? A lot, a lot of the employees are wondering if they're going to have to file unemployment benefits and what apparatus would they use to, to file those? And from the, the bill that was passed in Congress in Washington, from what I saw, there were only compensation for businesses for over 500 employees. And I think McElroy's, we, we only have maybe 120 employees total. And so those employees wouldn't be covered in the bill that was passed in Washington as, as far as what I'm understanding. And so what, I understand we're doing a state of emergency here in Biloxi, what assurance will there be for small businesses that, you know, they will be covered as well under the, the new bill and as far as, you know, what, what we're going to do going forward from this point on? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Leo. Do I have anybody else on my right-hand side of the room, your left-hand side, that would care to come up and speak? Anybody in the back of the room that would care to come up and speak? That will conclude our citizens' comments. Move on to the policy agenda. Ordinance A is first reading.
Ordinance amending section 542 to adopt the updated version of the National Electrical Code and, excuse me, and adding an exemption to, excuse me, to chapter five, the building code.
I move that.
Moved by George Lawrence, seconded by Felix Guines. Being a first reading, we'll move on to ordinance B. Lucy, if you would, please read.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinances in section 1314815, leisure and recreation
That was previously moved by George Lawrence and seconded by Councilman Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence, do you have any discussion?
Mike, could you explain what you're accomplishing here with the...
Councilman, what we're trying to do here, you know, we have, I thought it was three, it was four, leisure in the, in the city. Those leisure entertainment districts allow a patron to leave a restaurant and walk in the open with their drinks, sort of like a downtown bar situation. What we realize that the ordinance does not have any mechanism for us to say no if somebody wants to have a very large event. There are times we have to say no if, for example, the police are overwhelmed when another event at the same time. Or they might be embarrassed, they might, at, at, anyway, we, we...
Better mic. Testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
So we need, we needed a mechanism for the people to be able to apply for an event, a special event agreement and for the police department to be able to review their ability and the ability of the other first responders to, to cover that event. We're not saying no, what we're saying is if you're going to have more than 250 people and you know you're going to have more than 250 people, you need to come to the police department, get a permit to have that event in the special event, in the, in the leisure recreational areas. We have, we have, for example, during, let's say during cruising the coast, when the, when the police is, is committed to traffic control and all the things they're doing, if somebody decides to have 1,000 people at Point Cadet Marina, we'd have to say, no, we're committed during that time, we can't, can't support that. It, it just gives us a mechanism to say no. That, that's the purpose now. It's, this ordinance only addresses events in the entertainment districts and only events, it exempts city-sponsored events. So in that case, cruising the coast would be a city-sponsored event that, that wouldn't have to apply for a permit. That's what we're trying to do with this, we're trying to give ourselves a mechanism to say no. Somebody wanted to go to club level, for example, during spring break, when the police is committed to the Coliseum area and, and have 1,000 people at a party, where the police couldn't cover it, just didn't have the capacity to cover it. So there, the ordinance, as you, as you see and you read it, there are a series of questions, you know, of conditions under which the police would be able to say no. That's what we're trying to do.
Mr. Lawrence, I think your microphone's not on or it's not close enough?
I bet, I bet. Like turning it on helps. What I'm saying is that once you have some of these events and we see how it plays out, then we can come back and look at the thing, make sure we write everything in that should be in there or not in there. So if you have a few, you need to let us know so we can look at it and adjust it. That's all, other than that, I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Yes, if, if it were approved today, how long would it take for this ordinance to go into, this amendment to go into effect?
That would depend if it was, if it was unanimous or not.
Right. So if it's, if it passed unanimously today, then it goes into effect?
Today.
Today. If it's not unanimous, then there's what you've got, I think in addition to publish, do something else. And it's about 30, 45 days roughly? That be accurate? 30?
30.
Okay, thank you. And, and I had asked Attorney Abid earlier today, my first thought was Coliseum, the Coast Coliseum is one of the leisure districts and how does this impact events or activities that they have there where alcohol is provided or sold? Because it's somewhat a different entity mildly, but I don't understand all the ins and outs. Could, could you?
Just briefly, the Coliseum itself is within the leisure district along with the boardwalk where Shag is and all this. I think looking this over, it would be a good idea to, where it's a city-sponsored event, we also say a Gulf Coast Coliseum sponsored event. The intent of this is just to, so the police know if, where events are that are, that are staged and have already been, been scheduled. The Coliseum is sort of a little bit of an entity themselves, so I think that would be prudent to make that sort of an amendment, just to add Gulf Coast Coliseum sponsored along with the city of Biloxi.
And if, for some reason they were not included, could they still sponsor the events there? Just add it as a separate entity more or less, I don't know if that's...
You know, we prefer, prefer to have it laid out rather than getting into an issue of should they have gotten a permit or not because they're going to, they're going to make an argument that they don't, they're a part of the county and they're in a special jurisdiction and they don't have to comply with certain zoning laws. But other than getting all those arguments, we know what their events are, we know how they're scheduled. I think the chief of police and the sheriff work well together and so I wouldn't see any pop-up events like that at the Coliseum that should give us any concern.
But they are a special jurisdiction from what you said.
Yes.
Like, okay.
In their opinion, yeah.
Prepared to offer that, that at this time, if it's appropriate, that we include Coliseum-sponsored events in, to what's currently there is city-sponsored events. So I would offer that as a amendment.
There any discussion on the proposed amendment?
Yeah, I'm kind of fuzzy on this here. This is one of the areas, one of the, I, I don't like tabling things too much, but this is one that I think needs further discussion. There's some areas that, that I'm concerned with on this here and I think it needs further explanation in, in a few areas. So that's my take on it. I'm going to vote against it, either one of them, but I am open for tabling it to get further discussion on it so we can make sure that this is right. Because some, yeah, to get it right.
Mr. Guines, we'll, we'll do a little more discussion on that issue. The, the motion on the table is to include the language that would exclude the Coliseum from these requirements, correct?
Basically, we would, we would include language where it says that city-sponsored events do not require permits and we would add Coliseum, or events at the Coliseum would be, would, would, no, would not require a special events permit either. Is that accurate, Lucy?
We're just adding the language that includes the Coliseum along with city-sponsored events.
Correct.
So we're just going to, we're going to be voting on this amendment, not the actual proposal, just to amend this proposal. Is there any discussion on the amendment itself? All in favor of amending this to include Coliseum? Now the, the ordinance has been amended, is there any more discussion on the ordinance itself? Mr. Guines, I know you, you began to discuss some concerns you have with the ordinance.
Yeah, I would move to table it. For, for, table it for...
I'm sorry? Yes, Mr. Guines was the, the vote in the negative. Mr. Guines has a motion on the table to table this.
Let me ask this, Mr. Guines, you want to table it to have a workshop on this?
Absolutely.
I can support that. If you, if you're not comfortable with it or anyone, why, why, we have time. I don't think this is an urgent matter that has to be passed today, so I'll second your motion to table it if you could figure out a good time.
Because I want to get, yeah, I would think we need to get it right.
There is a motion on the, there is a motion on the table to table this, seconded by Mr. Guines, seconded by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion on the motion to table? Councilman Tisdale?
Is there any reason why we can't have that discussion right now?
I don't think there's any reason why.
Just, we've got a little time today.
I don't think it has to be done. I don't think it has to be done this fast, do it. Do you think it has to be done this fast?
Well, is, is there an urgency that you perceive?
Well, I know that we have several events that are coming up, and from what I just heard, I don't know that it would...
Most events I know have been canceled.
Delay any of the events that are coming up, but there's, there's no, there's, I can't think of a compelling reason, other than we have time today to discuss it, and why not discuss it today? You can still table it, but, I mean, we had a workshop today, and folks who could make it, made it, but why can't we discuss it today?
There is a place called Crest Live, or the Crest Building downtown, that holds 1,800 people. It's often used for parties. Because it's in the entertainment district, people attending a party there could also wander around the parking lot downtown with their alcohol. There is a club level that holds 850 people, which, if you had an event, the people could leave that building and walk around downtown with their drinks. That's going to cause a problem for the police, especially if they're committed elsewhere during those times when those kinds of events happen, those pop-up events that we won't know about until they happen.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm fearful that you have 1,500 people at the Crest Building drinking alcohol and carrying their alcohol out in the parking lot, and enjoying themselves in the parking lot. And this happens without the police, even knowing it's going to go down until such time as it pops up.
And from what you said earlier, right now, folks have to get a permit, or they can, they can schedule these events, but there's no reason, given whatever concerns the city might have, for the city to say, "Before you get a permit, we want to be assured of some things," and one of those is that we have adequate police coverage for whatever events may pop up under these circumstances. Would that be accurate?
And that we're able to ask them, "What kind of private security are you going to provide?"
Are we anticipating any events of this nature in the next 60 days?
Yes.
Okay.
That's really the incentive for me to write this ordinance change, was I was visited by one of the promoters and owners of one of those two establishments, asking about having an event during April.
So, there's no reason to deny them at this time, no matter what, basically, with the current ordinance?
If it were to occur the weekend of spring break, there would be a reason to deny it.
Right. But then, also, during spring break, if spring break occurs, you've got police, and we typically have officers from other jurisdictions that were calling in to help us with that event.
In this, in this case, councilman, it's my understanding that we're striking out, when it comes to getting people from other jurisdictions. The Chief Miller could fill you in on that, but the normal 30 to 40 extra people that we're able to get...
Not available this year?
Are not available this year.
Okay. All right.
I just think it's prudent for us to be able to occasionally say no if we can't, if we don't have the coverage.
Can I ask the attorney for a professional opinion? And would you say that an event or events of this nature are foreseeable? Are events of this nature, given the circumstances, are they foreseeable? In other words, might we have a party pop up here or there, outside establishments in East Biloxi or West Biloxi in the leisure district, that we would, might have to provide police in that area for safety, welfare reasons? Is that foreseeable? Would a prudent man pretty much say, or a reasonable man say, "It's spring, these things happen." This would be a reasonable thing to do at this time?
I mean, foreseeability over the next 30 to 60 days, I don't think anything is foreseeable. But I don't know what the level of travel is going to be 30 days from now. I wouldn't be surprised if anything organized is going on in that event. It would be good to know if something happens before it happens, if something is scheduled.
But you don't always know that, given the internet and today's world and what goes on. Anyway, I'd like to discuss it more, if there are other issues we hadn't touched on. I just agree that this is a good time to approve this measure, to approve this amendment, and move forward, but maybe there are other issues I'm not aware of. So, be glad to hear. I'd like more discussion. Thank you.
So, being with the emergency going on, and not supposed to be around more than 10 people, and say, a group decides to just hold a party, we can't do anything about that? They can just do what they want?
That's between the owner of the building and who he wants to rent it to. He has no requirement for him to come to the police department, ask for permission.
What about public property?
What about?
Public property.
If he wanted to have a, yeah, I mean, we don't have, we don't control the beach, as you know, but if somebody wanted to go to one of our city establishments, they would have to get a special event agreement with the city, if they want to use Point Cadet, Point Cadet Marina and so forth.
Even before approving this?
In fact, just as an example, on your agenda today, you'll see there are three, two or three special event agreements that you're approving for people to use city facilities. So, and that goes for MGM Park as well. If somebody wants to have an event in MGM Park, they have to come get the city permission to. So, there are no pop-ups on city. If there is a pop-up with 1,000 people on a city property, that would be a real problem for the police department. I'm sure they would not be happy.
Well, because of the state of emergency, you know, we shouldn't approve anything within the next 30 days anyway. That's why I figured we had enough time to sit down and discuss this, but since we wanted to carry on with a discussion, when we have a motion on the table to do a special workshop.
What's the president? I know people want to table it, so what's wrong with it?
Well, I'll tell you what I don't like, and I was raised in a family that was raised in a hospitality state, and I was taught never to say no. So, I would like, instead of a mechanism to say no, I would like to see some mechanism to say yes. And how do we achieve that? How do we get there? Instead of telling someone they can't have an event, how do we create an environment where they can have the event? How can we utilize their participation, others' participation, and create a situation where we tell people yes, instead of just having a mechanism to be able to say no? So, that's what I would like to see in the resolution, how we can achieve yes. Excuse me, the ordinance.
With one week or a time, we have enough time, and council members, that can make a decision next meeting. Just, it doesn't require a workshop, you just ask the administration.
Well, there is a motion on the table to table this, and we'll project it for one week. It was seconded by Mr. Glavine, if that's okay. Councilman Guines, if that's okay? We'll look at the...
Another question. Are we anticipating any events of this nature in this next week? Okay.
Well, the table, with the motion on the table, all in favor, please signal with the raise your hand. The motion to table for a week, passed unanimously? What would be convenient for the council?
Next week.
Next week, a week before the, before the council meeting, or after the council meeting?
Absolutely.
Do it after?
A workshop, correct? We're just going to deal with everything.
Do it at the council meeting.
Do it at a council meeting.
Yeah, okay. Nobody can answer their questions.
Yes, ma'am.
He said just give everyone time to ask any questions, get everything, and then we can vote on it in the next meeting.
There's no workshop.
Ordinance B being tabled will move to ordinance C? For C, if you would read that, Ms. Lucy?
Ordinance to amend the LDO, section 2367(c)(4) to address fences and easements.
This was originally moved by Councilman Lawrence and seconded by Councilman Glavine. Mr. Lawrence, do you have any discussion?
I guess we have to have another workshop. Just kidding. Exactly. What is the deal with defenses? You can't bill them on easements, so what's the deal with defenses?
This just came up when we were dealing with two property, and we got an institution to get permission from the director of public works. That was put into place when Dan Guy was the director of public works and engineering. So, keep consistent with ordinances. We're just looking to change the decision to the engineer.
Mr. Creel, does that have any, can you fill us in on the impact of the change of this code? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Ordinance passes unanimously. We'll move to ordinance D. If you would read ordinance D, Ms. Lucy?
Excuse me. Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for, from the present classification of LB limited business to NB neighborhood business, where properties identified as 2560 and 2598 pass road.
This is originally moved by Councilman Tisdale and seconded by Councilman Barrett. Councilman Tisdale, do you have any discussion?
Yeah, I would appreciate the support by my colleagues, from my colleagues, on this matter. This is the property on Pass Road directly across from Edgewater Cleaners, which is on the south side of Pass Road. This property's on the north side of Pass Road, in front of Norowski Dental Offices there. There are actually a couple of parcels that are being rezoned, and of course, you had the transcript from the planning commission meeting and everything. So, I appreciate your support on this matter, and urge you to approve it. Thank you.
Councilman Barrett?
Nothing.
Any further discussion on the council?
No.
There being none, all in favor? The ordinance carries unanimously. We'll move to resolution E.
Resolution granting conditional use for the expansion of a self-storage facility for a property identified as 201 Eisenhower Drive.
Mr. Heinrich, if you want to come up here, if anyone has a question for you, I'll open the...
I'll make a motion.
It's moved by Councilman Tisdale. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Newman. Councilman Tisdale, discussion?
As you proceed south from Pass Road down Eisenhower Drive, just before you go over the railroad tracks, there's a storage facility there, self-storage facility, and they have purchased west, right behind their current location, from Gulf Coast Rescue Mission, who has no objection, based on what I heard at the planning mission meeting a couple of weeks ago. It's effectively give some more room for storage. So, I listened to Mr. Heinrich during his presentation, and I'm sure he could answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Councilman Newman? Councilman Barrett?
None.
No questions?
No question.
This is the property next to where the old sea spire was? Is that the facility we're talking about? Do you remember, right there on the, north of the railroad tracks?
It's just north of the tracks there, but it's an expansion of what's already currently there, the storage facility that's there. The difference in these buildings will be climate-controlled. They're all, will be, will have HVAC inside the buildings for people to walk in, have a unit inside a climate-controlled facility. And then, as Mr. Tisdale said, they purchased a property to the west of this, and that way, they have a secondary exit out on the missionary, mission lane, you know, for secondary egress. So, it blends all together there and makes the project, you know, functional for exit, exiting out of the property on the backside there. So, I'm here to answer any other questions.
Will there, will it be able to hold a gathering of more than 250 people?
Especially a bit?
Too soon?
No. We'll table that.
Thank you, Mr. Heinrich.
All right, thank you.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move to resolution F. Was that removed?
Resolution authorizing engineering and legal departments to review property within and adjoining the Biloxi Cemetery.
That moved.
It's moved by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Councilwoman Newman. Wow. Councilman Lawrence?
Peter, could you put a little explanation on it? It's a good thing, I think. Take your best shot.
Yeah, we've, we've gotten inquiries about space over the last 20 years, and the response has always been, "We're full, we don't have any response." And talking with Christie, our engineer, and looking at some of the plats, we think there are some spaces and some adjoining areas that have never been platted. So, it's just to give us the authority to go out and start looking into that, get those replatted. And if we have those spaces, we need to set rates. We've looked around at different cities and what's available, and these rates are actually probably below what market rate would be, especially in cemeteries such as Biloxi Cemetery.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? There being none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the consent agenda. We'll start with, oh, did we have an addition that I overlooked? Oh, that's the FF.
Resolution declaring a state of emergency for COVID-19.
I apologize. We have a motion, motion by Councilman Glavine, do I have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Newman. Discussion?
You know, the discussion, you know, required, so we can have access to resources to allow us to deal with this crisis, as I was saying.
Any further discussion on the council? All in favor, please signal the raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to resolution item 4H.
Resolution approving the sale of geo-bonds and approving the form and execution of a bond purchase agreement.
This will discuss, this will require more discussion, I'm sure. Do I have a motion?
I move it.
Moved by Councilman Glavine, seconded by Councilman Tisdale. Mr. Glav, I mean, Mr. Lawrence, sorry. Moved by Councilman Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence, do you want to begin discussion?
Yeah, I guess you could explain this, is it a good thing, on the bond?
As the council will remember, some months, some weeks back, you approved, gave us authority to attempt to find a buyer to sell a bond to, so we could refinance our $14,000 bond, which is now got a $9 million balance on it. We are in the process of doing that, as you know, rates, if you've read the paper, on the internet, wherever you do your news, you know the rates are really low now, and they're, it's a great opportunity for us to finance that bond. In the process, we realized that we needed to have the option of going to a private placement in addition to a public, a public, where you put it out to bid. There are some private entities that we're dealing with, so we just want to open the door to be able to go to a private placement, if that's the opportunity we get. The market is very up and down right now, as you know, and there are days, you gave us permission to do this, as long as there were four criteria met, and, you know, they include the net settings of 2% or more. Right now, we're looking at 6% to 7% improvement, so it's a tremendous jump over what the record was. And those offers are with private entities, and if we want to move quickly, we need to have a public bond also to do.
Having said that, now's the time to pull it. I think that's where we're...
There are days in this week where we could have sold the bond, and there are days where people back off because they're nervous about the up and down trend. If we have that opportunity, we want to, we want to jump on it. If we have that opportunity, we want to, we want to jump on it. That's all we're really asking you to do. We're asking you to expand the opportunity that you gave us to include both public and private placement of the bond.
That's all. Any further discussion on the council?
Yeah, I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilman Glavine, Councilman Barrett, Councilwoman Newman? And I have no other, if you, I mean, I looked at all of the requirements, and I know that we talked about the net savings of 2%, and then the 1% savings for the underwriter, or the 1% expense for the underwriter. And if, with the rates as low as they are right now, if we can get those savings actualized, I'm all for it. I'll call for question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Motion was by Councilman Lawrence. No, Tisdale. I errantly said Glavine.
We look alike.
Pardon?
We look alike.
There being no more additions to the resolution portion of the agenda, I will move to council, I mean, the consent agenda. Councilman Lawrence, discussion on any in particular?
Some move.
Some move. Second.
Some move by Councilman Glavine, seconded by, my mouth is all over the place today.
The other Glavine.
Seconded by Dr. Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence, back to you, I'm sorry.
I think the first one, we had the special workshop, I think you ought to vote on that separate. A and B, those are the two things that was put on there from last week.
Okay, so A and B, you are suggesting a workshop for A and B?
No, no, we voted on them separately. We already had the workshop.
Oh, you want to vote on separately? Okay, so you want to move them outside of the consent agenda?
Right.
Okay, you have a motion to bifurcate the consent agenda, moving A and B outside of the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Councilman Tisdale. All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. We'll vote on A and B individually, as excluded from the consent agenda. Any additional items on the consent agenda that you are interested in discussing, Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure, eliminated all the ones we did, removed.
I'm sorry?
I thought we removed so many of them. I'm just trying to make sure we get them all straight. There's a reason I did that, which is a good thing. But other than that, those main two, with the first two, the rest, you know, pretty much is you-teen stuff, so I don't have any other questions on anything.
All right, Councilman Glavine?
I think y'all, I'm good with everything.
Councilwoman Newman?
Yes, sir.
The only question I have, I thought that I had seen, and it may be on one of these that's removed, another agreement with MDA for 10,000. I see the one for 3,000.
I think that's a D, is it C?
The 10,000 on there?
No, that's, um...
C.
So it's the very, so 5C was the one that had the, it was for a conference or something? With MD, some?
I know that because you have a question, I have to answer the question. To the Biloxi, and I'm not sure if you have a... So I actually pulled it, I asked, pulled it up and sent a check.
Okay, and can you? Okay, and then can you further explain D for me? It's, it's a number, letter D. Is that just, that's just for?
Oh, D.
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir. Each year, we make a small donation on the health workers in the city of, into a pot which pays for the agents in Washington who is on consulting, and it'll be the alignment and closure of coast.
Okay.
Our annual contribution to that.
All right, I think that's everything that I, I think everything that I had a question on was removed. And the Keith Hurd, on that, we originally, we had went down to 7,500, but we added the 2,500 back on to that whenever the other position was taken out. Okay, so that was my question on that. Okay, that's all I have.
Councilman Tisdale? Councilman Glavine? And on NN, the resolution authorizing entry into a tri-party agreement for downtown housing incentive grant? This is, this is part of our grant program, right, our $25,000 grant program? Right, up to. I just wanted, if you could give me an update on how many applications we have received and how many that we have denied that haven't made it to us yet, if there have been any?
If I could get that to you next week, we've got a list. We have more that are coming en route. One of them includes the Josettes Building, and I think it's going to, after that, we're going to leave about 100, 120,000 left. But there are probably 15, not counting Josettes, which would be 26 units. There's about 15 or so other units that are, that are on board.
Okay, yeah, I would love just to break down to that. Thank you.
Okay.
One question on this subject. Peter, these are really not grants. We paid this money back. How are you considering a grant?
Well, it's a grant, considered a grant to the person receiving it. The money will be paid back through the increased property tax values. But that's done internally between Main Street and our, and the city.
But the city has to pay it back on the taxes. So you're taking the taxes and paying this back, correct?
We're taking the new, the new tax increment, and we're basically, we would pay the Economic Security Fund back instead of, it still is all going into the general fund, but it would be paying back to the Economic Security Fund. This is the first year coming up where we will show what the amount will be. The Fritz Building is now the first property that's, that's on the tax rolls, and we would have like a line item showing the Economic Security Fund will be due about five, three or $4,000 to be paid back from general fund to Economic Security Fund.
The first one we did was 50,000, but the, the little retails and two apartments on the, how long you have to pay 50,000 back? 15 years?
It's, it's, I've got to look at the grant, at the agreement between us and Main Street. It's my impression it's until the taxes are paid back. And so in some cases, it could be...
Let me acknowledge someone that might have a little more information on this situation. If you'd come up and grab the microphone and fill us in.
Okay, there's two tax programs that are, there's two different programs that we're doing. We're doing a tax abatement program. That is where they have up to 15 years to pay back in sales taxes from their business. And one of those that is doing that is Machado Patano. That is the only one that is currently participating in the tax abatement program where the city will get taxes back. Now, we have also, the grant program that we have, that the city gave the $500,000 for are grants. We will, they will, that person that received that grant will not pay that grant money back, but we will get the money back in additional taxes that were not there before. So that grant money, they're not required to pay that back because that is considered a grant.
Ms. Kay, would you state your name and your position just for the record?
Okay, my name's Kay Miller, and I'm the Biloxi Main Street Executive Director.
Thank you.
The one machado was 80,000 a grant, that's the facade.
That's the facade.
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about these apartments where they, we paid them $25,000, Palmetto Apartments, up to 25,000.
Up to $25,000, yes.
Dollars are totally different, that's different.
Yes, it's, it's totally different. Yeah, those are two different types of projects.
Yeah. So I was just wondering, I mean, we do, use the money to pay it back. They're not paying it back, the housing, we are. The city will pay that back, the taxes we collect. So I hope we collect enough taxes to take care of it. That was my question. Nothing to do with machado, that was something totally different.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Kay, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? With, well, Councilman Glavine?
No, 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 go ahead, I thought you was voting.
Withhold objections until the end. We're going to vote, and I'll take your objections.
Oh, okay.
All in favor? We are voting on 5A and 5B separately. This is just the remainder of the consent agenda. Do you want to vote on A and B first? Well, let's take it back to A, and I'll open the floor for discussion. Do we need to remove this? It was moved as a movement of the consent agenda, but as we moved it separate, do I need to move it again? Discussion on A?
Yeah, I was just thinking, the times and everything, we're in an emergency, we're in, I think this is time for us to make sure we control the money we have, and just not in favor of anybody anything extra at this time.
Councilman Glavine, discussion?
I think because of the position we in, I'm at a point where I think we can, we should do a little bargaining in this thing. I think we should split it in half, or at least a little over, give them 2,500, and look at it as our economy, you know, if our economy starts to look a little bit better and this virus start going away, we can possibly look at the rest of it. I'm probably not in favor of giving them all of it, but I believe that they do deserve some of it. And depending on how the rest of the council feel, that's just my opinion right now, and I can move it later.
Councilman Newman?
This is a, it's, it's a very difficult decision to, to spend money at this time for something not like this, not knowing how the state or the federal government is going to help us out, or if they will at all. The casino and the hotel industry is the bulk of our revenue here in the city of Biloxi, if not a bulk, a very, very large percentage of it. And today, basically, or in the last 24 hours, that's went from that to zero. We don't know how long that's going to last. You know, I was looking at all these other things that were removed from the agenda as well, and, you know, there's some of these things, and they may not have been removed because of this, but there's some of these things that, this isn't the first meeting that we're going to have to look at things and say, okay, yes, this is a good cause, I believe in this, but can we justify spending this money? Not knowing what our revenue is going to look like for the next 14 days, 30 days, you know, we don't know how long it's going to be, and we don't know what kind of assistance that we're going to get. I'm going to go with the rest of the council on this, whatever everyone else feels personally. If it was just me making the decision, I save every penny that I can save for the city to make sure that our police department and our fire department can provide the essential services of protecting our city. And if this passes in 14 days, and they do have to start the 30-day window of shutting it down, if this passes us in 14 days, or 21 days, or within that 30-day window that they started, I have no problem funding it. But in the position we are, that would just be my stance if it was just up to me.
Councilman Tisdale?
Yeah, the, the only thing that's changed, and it's a significant thing, is, is this coronavirus issue. And if you're looking not to support this, then you have an avenue for not supporting it. My only comment would be that we've discussed this for several meetings now, over several months. We discussed it during the budgeting process. Just voted up or down today. The gentleman needs to know, Coast Transit Authority needs to know how to deal with their budget for the rest of the year. So if you can't support it, just don't vote for it today. If you can support it, vote for it. But vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, listen, we, we, on CTA for public transportation, and they've been, they're willing to work with us. We tried a service line in my ward, and it didn't work. Whether this passes today or doesn't pass, we'll just say it doesn't pass today. Nothing says, when we got a clearer picture of what we're dealing with, we can't come back to the table and say, hey, there is a need, the things have cleared, we can put a new resolution forward and work with CTA to say now it's time to restart this service. But I will tell you this, it's going to be very important that we look at what's going on in our income and expenses, and I would say we're probably looking at some kind of workshop to amend our budget, to make sure that we know what we're looking at, and we spend these tax dollars wisely. Councilman Barrett alluded to police and fire, those essentials are number one, priority number one for the public safety, to make sure that's in good shape. But we're going to have to bite the bullet on a lot of things, I'm assuming. We're hoping for the best, there ain't no doubt, but like I said earlier, things are not just changing by the hour, they're changing by the minute. We got to be, prepare ourselves for that, and our leadership is going to be tested over the next probably several months. So as much as I want to support this, and last week, knowing that this meeting was going to occur, I was prepared to support it and vote for it, but the dynamics have changed, and I'm not going to be able to support any kind of additional spending at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. And I know I didn't make it this morning, and I apologize, Mr. Coggins, that I wasn't able to be here again. I meant to call you personally and talk to you about it. I was actually, when we did this, we did the, the route through my ward and through Kenny's ward, and we needed funding, I went to the city of DeArberville, and I worked with them and got them on board. And what I was doing here in this past week, I was contacting the vice presidents, presidents, general managers, the leadership of the casinos to see if I could get funding. Well, apparently, that's not going to happen at all right now. I discussed a problem with finding, with, with additional funding because we passed the deficit budget, and the, the money crunch that we're facing now is probably more important than ever. And so I concur with, with Councilman Glavine and the rest of the members on the board that understand that fiscal responsibility at this moment is more important. It's not political posturing, I'm not looking for an out, it's not the coronavirus giving me an excuse. I was against this budget from the beginning, and I was against more additional spending. I appreciate the service that, that CTA provides, and on the, on the beach and those routes right now is probably less necessary than, than most other things. So I'll call for the question. All in favor of consent agenda, item A? All against? The agenda item fails, two to five? Those four, Dixie Newman and Paul Tisdale. All others against. This will bring us to consent agenda, item B, voted on individually. I'm going to open the floor to discussion, beginning with Councilman Lawrence.
Pretty much the same thing, it's same type of discussion, so. Not the time to do it at this time, that's all.
Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, I have to agree with George, it's not the time to do it. So I'm a big supporter of the library system, I think they're going, but they're going to be closed too, so, I think.
Councilwoman Newman? Councilman Barrett?
I just echo the same thing, you know, if, if, if two weeks this passes and the casinos open back up and the hotels are full, I have no problem voting yes for this, but right now, just anything that's not an absolute necessity until we know more, I just can't, you know, and my right conscious support it.
Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, low and moderate income citizens of Biloxi are going to be the ones who are most affected and impacted. I don't know how much we get for each resident for census purposes. I don't, I don't know if there are some who might use these computers, but I suspect there are, at the library to complete their census form. But I would urge you to approve this despite the comments, simply because... But I would urge you to approve this despite the comments, simply because this is a service to the citizens of Biloxi. I'd like for them to be well-educated. Similar circumstances to the Coast Transit Authority, and that we told these folks at the time, come back, we'll see if the budget's a little bit better. Kind of wish it had been on the agenda last week, so we might have had a little more discussion before this virus issue came up. But I can't say anymore on the issue. I don't, I don't think at this time it's going to make much difference, but still, I'd urge you to support it. And if you can't support this figure, I'd certainly offer an amendment, or one of you might offer an amendment, even if it was $5,000 to get five computers or six computers, but they have outdated technology, and they're going to continue to have outdated technology, and we seem to be slipping a little farther behind with each fiscal year in supporting our libraries here in Biloxi. That's all, thank you.
Is that a, is that a motion? Councilman Glavine?
Seven years that I've sat on this council with a lot of my colleagues, this has been one of the largest expenditures, and we have supported our libraries each and every year. Again, we find ourselves in unusual times, and I think it falls in the same category. We have to see where our resources are. We've got a $60 million budget, municipal budget, third of it comes from gaming, third of it comes from higher income taxes, third of it comes from sales taxes for the most part, and they're not going to pay us just because we need it for that $60 million budget. Those, those resources and that income stream is going to be drastically affected by what's going on. And so it's not that we don't want to, or that we're opposing this, it's just, I think we got to take a pause and see exactly where we are, until we know how drastic this coronavirus is going to affect the economic cycle of our city. So, again, there may be a time after this passes, we can come back and revisit these requests, but right now, I don't think this is the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. And I think I'm just going to echo my original comments regarding consent agenda A. I know we talked after the last meeting, and I expressed that my faith and belief in the, in the public library system, and of course, that was prior to the current conditions. How much patronage has, or do you expect the library to see during this?
Crisis?
Yes.
Well, this is something we can come back and visit, that don't have to happen today.
I would concur with, with that suggestion. And being that, I don't think it's an immediate need at the moment, then I would, I'm going to have to vote against it, and hopefully, we can readdress this when our financial situation is under control and more understood. Call for the question.
Councilman Demin, real quick, you know, just thinking about, and, and Paul did make a, a good point, because once the crisis come to a minimum, we're going to need those computers right afterwards. So I don't think we need to close it down, you know, I'm like you in the voting, you know, saving the money, but we need to kind of look at, if there's, once this crisis come to an end, we're going to probably need those computers, especially on an area where there are not a lot of people are at. So, on second thought, I think we might need to just kind of hold off on it, but, but not kill it.
Well, that's why, and I agree with you. That's why I want to wait until we, we have a better understanding of where we're going to be financially, and what this crisis is actually going to entail long-term. So if you want to table it, I'd be happy to, or it can just be re-presented to the council.
So just call?
Absolutely, if you want to, we can. Do you, is that a motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion.
There's been a motion?
Well, no, I'm just, strictly the library.
So, Councilman Gines has put a motion to table, subject to call, on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Barrett. Is there any discussion on the, the proposed motion to table? There being none, all in favor?
Yes, let me, sorry, I was waiting, I was waiting for a glance. Thank you. Again, I would say what I did with CTA, just vote it up or down at this point. I mean, our fiscal year is slipping by. It's going to be several months from the comments you've made before things return to normal, if normal. But I think the library deserves an answer today for the rest of this fiscal year. Just vote it up or down. But from what I heard, come back at some point in the future before this fiscal year is up, and I suspect that the response at that time, if that occurs, will be, we're in month 11, we're, we're going to be budgeting, there's always going to be some reason to kick this down the road. So if you support the libraries, just vote it up or down, whether you support it or not, vote it up or down today, so they'll know not to count on, or even remotely think about anything additional this year, and they can begin planning for next year and make plans to finish this year with the technology they have. That's all, just vote it up or down today.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. There is a motion on the table before, I would, a little discussion, if you would indulge me. I would ask her, her position on that. I think procedurally, it's very similar, what's tabled, subject to call, and we bring it back up, or if we vote it down, and they, and the administration puts it back on the agenda. Makes very little difference. How do you feel? Would you like us to vote it up or down now, or leave it on the table until we can figure out what's going on with the city's finances?
Bottom, there you go.
Yeah, we need to buy new mics with that money.
This to me would say, I would love to have the opportunity to come back if things get better. However, if you, I, I, you know, I don't want to close the door on it, I guess, I would say. If there's a chance, sure, I'll come back, I'll, I'd be happy to come back, but we'll act as if you had said no.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion to table, subject to call? Please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. That will close out our consent agenda. Oh, that's right, we had to go back and vote on those individually. So all in favor of the consent agenda, and I'll take objections afterwards? Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any objections on the council?
Uh, Q.
George Lawrence is against item Q. Deming is in opposition to I. Are there any others? Let's bring us to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creo?
Item A on the agenda, Skylar Ann Hansen, 627 Cop Street. This property is still in violation, but it's been sold to a very reputable contractor that specializes in rehabbing distressed properties, and so I will just state that it's resolved as of right now, and I would expect him to come in and get a permit to rehab this building.
I'm sorry, Mr. Creo, what did you suggest at the end?
It's sort of resolved.
Whenever, whenever a property ends, we essentially have to start over. But in this case, I would expect this contractor to come in and pull a permit to restore the property. But the case with Skylar Ann Hansen is just redundant now because it's been sold.
So it doesn't carry, it doesn't carry with the property, it carries with the ownership?
Correct, yes.
What about, how are we addressing code issues right now? I've had a couple people call me, and, and they're concerned with their ability to get things taken care of in the immediate timeframe because of what's going on locally and nationally. Are we giving any consideration for that?
We don't have another community court until the first week of April, so we'll be evaluating that. I know that, I think that the court cases for municipal court have been suspended for a while, and I would expect that the same thing will happen with the community court.
Municipal, I'm sorry, Peter, municipal court's been suspended for two weeks as Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Creo. Bring us to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Seconded by Councilman Gines, seconded by Paul Tisdale. Discussion, Councilman Lawrence?
Definitely, we need to, we need some money rolling in now, for sure. Somebody need to step up here.
You were just clearing your throat, that wasn't a cough, right?
So we do have some good news. MEMA last Thursday reimbursed the city $630,000. We're also in discussions with them about additional $609,000 for some other items that, I want to let that lie until we got some positive movement on it, and I'll be in discussions with MEMA about releasing some of the funds, they call trap funds, which are monies we believe are due to the city for payments to these contractors, which MEMA has not had a chance to review, because we have to issue change orders, but I'm going to ask them to relax their standards a little bit and reimburse us. So we got a cash flow coming in, and we got some other things in the pipeline.
Got to stay on top of it now, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the routine agenda? There being none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to recess? Seconded by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Dixie Newman, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously.